Okay, I make that quite a clock. Welcome to this afternoon's meeting of the Strategy and Resources Committee. I'm Peter Saris, I will be chair of this meeting. The councillors present are councillors Dick, Kentrell, Sinott, Bagent and Barnett. And I'd like to welcome councillor Barnett who's new to this committee. I'll be joined by councillor Herbert as leader of the council, and councillor Robertson as executive councillor for financial resources when it comes to matters under his wing. Officers will be addressing us on an item-by-item basis. I would ask all speakers to be to the point and to use the microphone to provide it. Lastly, we are not expecting a fire drill, so if the alarm does sound, please exit prior to the minutes marked. Turn to item one, apologies for absence, I'm not aware of any of you wanting to be here. Item two, declarations of interest. I don't need declarations of interest from councillors or anybody else. I will declare an interest with respect to items six and seven. I'm a fellow at Trinity College which has interests in punting with respect to Garrospital Lane, and so I will not be voting on items six and seven. Minutes previous meeting, first of all, I ask members to consider the minutes of the meeting of the 21st of March. May I please sign those minutes as an actual record? Likewise, the minutes of the meeting of the 26th of May. Thank you. We now move on to item four, public questions. I've been notified of questions relating to both items six and seven. What I propose to do is proceed directly from item six to item seven in terms of the public questions. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and then two minutes of supplementary questions. And so our senior committee manager will give notice when there are 30 seconds left, pressing her bell. But before we proceed to the public questions themselves, a large number of points have been made by members of the public in circulation who are not here with us. The members have before them a dossier of representations from members of the public, so I propose that we now adjourn this meeting for 10 minutes to allow councillors time to read those representations. So we will begin again just before quarter past. It looks to me like councillors have stopped reading, so I suggest we resume the meeting now. So we return to questions from the public. As I said earlier, each member of the public will have three minutes, followed by further two minutes of supplementary points or question, and the committee manager will sound the bell to give notice of 30 seconds in each instance. The first public speaker I have notified is Lawrence Austin. Is Mr Austin present? No. In that case, Julian Moore, please.
Thank you. I'm the chairman of the residents' association of Old Unum, which represents streets very close to the Grant and Mill Pond, such as Martin Lane. We have more than 80 members, and we feel strongly enough about the possibility of another punt station on the Mill Pond and touting on Queen's Green. There are five members of the association are here behind me. And another 14 have said very strongly that they hope that they will reject both a punt station on the Grant and Mill Pond and touting on Queen's Green. I'll say why in a moment, but I'd just like to touch quickly on a question raised last week in email dialogue on this issue. If not the Mill Pond and Queen's Green, then where for the currently unlicensed punts? And my answer would be nowhere. I understand that safety is not an issue, even if all the unlicensed punts continue to operate. But there is also the question of amenity, and the topic of licensed and unlicensed punts means punting is no longer a joy, and it should be both for the residents and the tourists. Turning back to the Mill Pond, I completely support the points made by our councillors in the Punting Provision paper, reasons why there shouldn't be an extra punt station there. And I think in particular the phrase semi-rural setting. This is a place of five minutes to a King's Parade. It's extraordinary and wonderful that here we have a semi-rural setting. Please let us keep it, it's a joy for all of us. And similarly, Queen's Green, it's a great tourist common. It really, we shouldn't be thinking of damaging it with touting. I'd rather be accosted by a tatt on Queen's Parade than when we're scrolling or sitting on Queen's Green.
Thank you for your question, and I appreciate including the number of written responses and the strength of feeling of residents in your area and also beyond your area. Clearly, in front of the council in item six, and for the committee to consider is report looking at different options for potential extra sites. We felt as a committee, and I felt and officers felt we needed to review what sites might be possible, and I use that word might, in the public domain along the river. There's both public land and private land, and so effectively the report looks at Garrospital Lane, it looks at Lord of Green, and it looks at the Mill Pond. And a balance view needs to be taken. So I will be contributing my views later on this. I did look at all of the sites last week, and that informed me and reminded me, because I do know the sites. And after listening to the committee, I'll be expressing a view. So I'm not going to preempt their comments, but I put considerable weight on the points that have been made. Particularly about the pond itself. I think some of the marking of land in terms of the common is indicative rather than that would be actually a large body of individuals standing at any point on there. But certainly the core issue is, is the Mill Pond a suitable site for a hunting station? A second one, given that there is already grants of punts located there. And it is, as has been pointed out, a very special environment close to the centre of Cambridge. Thank you.
Is there supplementary?
Very busy, thank you. Grant and Pond, as you say, is already there, but it is some way from where we walk, and it's not very disturbing. A second punt station closer to where we walk would be disturbing.
Thank you. The next public speaker I have is Emma Wing.
Hello, hi. I work at Laverosa Punt Station, so I've come to give you, for you, from my perspective. We've owned the station for eight, nine years, I believe. I personally have worked at Laverosa for 18 years, and solved this problem at its infancy. We used to work from King's Bridge, and we used to get people from the bridge and getting across Queen's Green and take people back there. We then went down to Jesus Green and to start with, there were four of us, and this has grown into what we see today. So we have an issue now that was supposed to have been cleared up... That should have been cleared up when we had that occasion that happened with Laverosa. And unfortunately, it didn't get cleared up at that, it just got a lot worse. So my fear is, I think our view from Laverosa is that if this isn't set up correctly or regulated correctly, then we're only going to see another problem in the future, that will be a continuation of this problem that we see today. And the one thing that does concern us is that there's going to change in the document now stating that walking tours will be permitted. We, our view is that this could be used as a backdoor way of saying, you know, touting poor punts. So I'm not sure that if you keep that in there, that you will see, you know, a result. But yeah, I think that's the overall argument of this issue.
Well, I'll particularly answer in terms of item seven. So I think the issue in terms of touting will address under that. So we've got a very full report in front of us. I mean, we, as a council, we recognise that there's a significant nuisance. As you'll be aware and others that are in the room are aware, the council's got specific powers and roles in this and other stuff, including the Conservatives. So our focus in item seven isn't specifically about the river, it's about the disturbance to people just walking around the city. So we obviously address a slightly different issue about the council looking at some of its opportunities, if there are opportunities, to review punt station provision in item six. And I think the core of the issue is that we've got in front of us a consultation on that, which the committee will give its views on, which officers have done considerable analysis on. And then it will be my job to review and make a decision after I've listened to the other public speakers and the committee. But we do have a serious nuisance problem in the centre of the city, and perhaps the issue that we're particularly addressing on item seven.
Do you have a supplementary?
I'd just like to say, with regards to people working at Laverosa, all of them really care about our city and would approve of, you know, touting the event in the city centre.
And I just think that, well, those of you who've been involved for a number of years know that there was quite an argument, a) about operations around the Keepside and b) about that part of town. And lifestyles are perfect, but if you walk along Bridge Street, it isn't the same as walking through the centre of town. So there's a clear area there where, by unanimity between the different operators in that part of town, there is a significant nuisance to residents or to visitors. And so I think that is a part of tribute to the way that the people operating from Laverosa operate their businesses.
The next speaker I have is Lynette Gilbert. Is Lynette here?
Yeah.
Now, I have you down to speak under both items six and seven. So if you could speak and address item six at this point, and then come back to you for item seven later on. Okay? To give you more full time.
Hi. May I just introduce myself before you set the floor for the rest of the panel?
Could you use my microphone, please?
Hi. My name is Lynette Gilbert. I live by the river, I'm carried along by the river. I'm a keen resident. I'm also a parent who has a child involved in the independent punting. And in that respect, I speak on behalf of the many parents of my acquaintance who also have young subjects who would like to make a difference there. Okay. I wish to support a proposal for a new punt station. I remember recently commenting in the Cambridge News that there appears to be a free-for-all when it comes to punt stations, but nothing can be further from the truth. The Cambridge pond market is as tightly closed as a clam. The Conservatives admit to commercial licences to operators as six approved stations. This has nothing to do with safety, congestion or navigation. These operators can licence as many punts as they wish, the one exception being the city's Laverosa station which does permit punt numbers. One operator controls 60% of approved frontage and about 60% of all licensed punts. The competition market's authority states that a 40% market share represents a dominant position. This dominant position is currently subsidised by Cambridge Roadways. The report says that 21 boats would yield an annual income of 30,000 to 35,000. On that basis, 80 boats on East Side should be yielding at least 120,000. But in fact, the city charter's just 15,000, 120 attending which is to plan competition and until last year, records were like that. What has this got to do with touting or proposing a pre-punt station? Well, it means that young locals who just want to run a few boats are being refused licences then handed for being illegal. Other operators have exclusive use of the approved stations. So independents cannot seek business near the river in line with the voluntary code. They have to go further away to private business. When they tried to sell tickets through local shops, something that recruited town numbers, the city council wrote to retailers and told them not to sell independent tickets. The city council website tells visitors not to buy punt trips from anyone other than named operators, making it hard for independents to market themselves, for example, online. This is to a strength of trade. Punting is the number one experience for visitors to Cambridge, one to enjoy. That demand won't go away. Young independent operators simply want the chance to compete on the level playing field. So I urge the committee to further the process that they have started with Laverosa, by creating a fair competitive punt market by approving a new station. Not just because competition law requires it, but because these young entrepreneurs deserve it. Their boats are fully insured, contrary to the state intention consultation. Their shutters are skilled. It's notices in self-hired punts who are causing wasted congestion and accidents. And they offer good customers again. Customers recommend them and come back for repeat tours. The Conservatives will memoriously observe these garrick hostel operators and state that they are safe and courteous. In the long term, there is a strong place for allocating river frontage owned by the city more equitably to ensure a fair market. In the short term, a new punt station now would allow young local entrepreneurs with only 20 old punts to operate legitimately.
Thank you for your question, Lynette. And I appreciate that there are parents of people in the independent punting business. It isn't the council's business to regulate where people put punting stations. Ultimately, decisions on appropriate locations are more a planning matter than anything. What you've got in front of you is a report looking at some of the issues with existing sites at Garrospital Lane, where on a very small footprint, 20 or so boats are judged to be operating. And then reviews a couple of other sites. The public land is only a proportion of the land that abuts the river, and there's a significant amount of private land as well. So the committee will consider what the options are in terms of the different sites that are listed here. But a significant part of the decision would still be a matter of planning. Similarly, it's not in the domain or the control of the council whether or not other people make planning applications. And indeed, there have been planning applications in the past. It's a question about whether the planning committee considers some of those sites as suitable as well. If it was simply a matter of making money, then the council would probably be looking to try and set up more and more punt stations. It has to be a balance against all sorts of issues about whether environmentally, whether locationally, some of the other sites are appropriate. We reject the idea that the council is somehow a part of a monopoly on the river.
Do you have a supplementary?
I think that while the city is not there to regulate what private land it must do, they do have responsibilities to allocate of land, existing punt stations equitably, and to look really very carefully at the opportunities in these other areas.
And, well, both as landowner, but people are free to take applications to planning committee, both as landowner but separately and independently as a planning committee, the council would look at any applications it is. But it has to be judged on whether it's a suitable location. And it has to be judged against the metal trade as at currently at Garrospital Lane, and whether that's accommodative or within the site.
Thank you. The next speaker I have is Mr Kozicevic.
My name is Manad Kvasic. I'm the director of traditional...
So if you stick into the microphone, just hang this, you can put it round.
My name is Manad Kvasic. I'm the director of traditional Cambridge schools, which is one of the punt operations that operate at Garrospital Lane. I'd just like to start by correcting something I think has come across. And that we were all directed to work at Garrospital Lane by the river manager in 2008. And we were fully licensed. And it was actually happening in terms of any of the places we were to do. To licence and revise changes since then. So it's not...
They often think that will work far better. And...
If you turn this off, so I can look at the way the microphone is in.
Yes, thank you. We've got a lot of time here. Okay, thank you very much. So as the director of traditional Cambridge schools, we built our business around Garrospital Lane since 2008. For over a lifetime, we were in constant communication with the river authority and the council about the problem that we saw becoming. We wanted something to be done about it, because we knew that it would be too many towns. So... So we have excellent safety record, there's been enough accidents on our watch. We are experienced punt operators, we understand the council has inserted that few man tasks. However, we do not feel that arguments on that subject should be confused with the viability of further locations to load and unload people onto punts. Once it's established that a location is safe, can follow in line with industry standards, then surely it must be in public interest to the council to explore proposals that provide further funds to the public purse and the growing industry. Now, there are twenty boats operating from Garrospall. That represents only six per cent of the boats on the river. And it's unreasonable to suggest that this threatens any of the other established operators. Many of them have recently been given permission by the council to expand their market share and thrive in the current state of affairs. We ask councillors that they do not dismiss any area of boat stations based upon concerns over touting, as it's going to be easily regulated and controlled through specific number caps and strict behavioural codes of practice. We've made specific proposals regarding the site, which we hope the council will consider in detail.
Well, a big conclusion here, because I'm in a slightly better location. I mean, we addressed a number of the issues that you raised, then around pages thirty-six and thirty-seven. So, as you see from the report, it's judged not appropriate as a site for the kind of twenty-boat operation, because it simply is a small-scale location. Then there's a proposal potentially for twelve boats, and the Conservatives are considering this issue at their licensing committee on the sixth of July on a related issue, I think. So, basically, effectively, I'll just point the committee to what's in the report and from people's knowledge of the sites to make a judgement about whether or not it's a suitable site. I will be listening to the views of the committee, just I've listened to your points around. And I've taken down a few notes which I'll refer to later.
Do you have a supplementary? In that case, that concludes questions for item six. Now we move on to item seven. And again, so firstly, I'd like to get the questions out of the way now. So the first question I have for item seven is again from Lynette Gilbert.
Is that what you were going for? Yeah, the comments at six were very much around the benefits of a new punt station. This is really item seven, so on the PSPO. The legislation states that activities prohibited by a PSPO must be unreasonable and justify the restrictions imposed. It's my sense that the ones offered in this report really don't provide sufficient grounds or light of those criteria. On the unreasonable front, the police station, this police station accompanying the consultation contains a number of generalisations about antisocial behaviour and so going right there with crime disorder. Yet evidence is dashed provided by the criminal or antisocial behaviour. No examples of anyone being cautioned for supposedly endemic behaviour using minor means to resist touting. The city is awash with CCTV, so the police can bring an action at any time if there are genuinely a problem. They know who the towns are, but they do not. The hostile consultation report's response is focused repeatedly on the number of towns and the number of approaches they receive. And it's notable that the word aggressive is repeatedly used as a synonym for persistent, persistent approaches, but the two are not the same. The other reality is that most people are simply not bothered. The only piece rejected is statistically valid evidence that the city ever protected. A survey in 2011 of both visitors and residents reported that a large majority of both groups said that touting had no adverse effect on it. This report seems to sum up the true situation of paragraph eight, when it says that many people find the mere presence of numerous towns annoying and others like dislike repeated approaches. The problem is nuisance, it's not bad behaviour. So the issue is whether a PSPO which criminalises is a proportionate response to a nuisance. The city says in section seven that it has done everything possible to find a proportionate response, but it then in few rejections suggestions from independent operators, for example, to voluntarily reduce touting numbers or wear identification. And it seems extremely unfair to reject these suggestions now, when the true underlying problem is the exclusion of independents from riverfront locations where touting is permitted, and the city's previous efforts to prevent receiving business through other channels such as local shops. We urge the committee to pause now and to put the PSPO idea aside, show that they're genuinely willing to work constructively with young, locally independent operators just trying to make a living with a few punts, rather than trying to criminalise them. I'll try to end this off.
Well, I'm just, I mean, I'm sure the committee's heard those comments, as I have the judgement about whether or not the use of a punt station's protection order is appropriate is a test on page forty-three. So Lynette has quoted elements of that. The, yeah, the issue is, is it detrimental? Is it persistent? And in that combination, are the activities unreasonable? So it would be for the committee to decide that.
Do you have a supplementary? Okay. In that case, the next final speaker I have is Mr Ard.
Hello. Hi there. My name's Ronald, I'm also director of traditional Cambridge tours. I'd like to be really focused on the PSPO. Starting with, we have sought legal advice regarding PSPO from both previous officer human sisters and David Bull, who seemed to make it's chambers with both the opinion that PSPO is going to challenge huge fundamental flaws in both its consultation and the process as a whole. This is due share by both civil liberties groups, liberty and the manifesto club, whose director has told us she'll be reporting the matter to the Home Office. We are firmly, thirty-three complaints received by the council and subsequent fifty-four per cent vote in favour of PSPO represents dissatisfaction with touting as a whole, not simply in the city centre. There will be people who have voted for this PSPO who should go through will be surprised when touting persists on both East Side and on Silver Street. If an act is genuinely detrimental to the lives of locals, then it cannot be argued that it becomes less detrimental simply because it occurs a hundred metres up the road or by the river or by another company. It also requests that concerns that have been expressed by other punt companies that touting on King's Parade is unfair are not given serious consideration for obvious reasons of competition. The number of towns in our begins by far the most important factor. And this could easily be addressed, and as such, a blanket ban would be disproportionate. If the PSPO needs to go through regardless, and if the objective today is to stop nuisance touting, then we ask that PSPO does not cover the passive sale of punt tickets within the PSPO area through shops or market stores, nor would it disallow operators from clearly showing meeting points or internet bookings. Council Herbert has rightly identified there are numerous ways to advertise a business other than touting. For example, internet bookings. It would be reasonable, we would attest, to have a member of staff at a meeting point dressed in uniform. Our staff also rely on for childcare costs, for rents, for student loans and for bills. Many of these people will not be, both of their families, out of state. And we hope the council have made efforts to research the human impact and the financial cost of passing this on. Okay.
Certainly, alternate sale routes were part of the, are part of the consideration for the advice I'm receiving from the committee tonight before I make the decision. Clearly, there are, there are coaches coming in, and there are private places where tickets can be sold. As in the discussion with directors from TCT, we have had discussion on those matters. I'm not aware of the point that Lynette Gilbert made earlier, that somehow the council has objected to selling tickets in private locations. Clearly, that isn't actually covered by the control of touting in public places. So it is certainly part of the factor that I think the committee should look at, that there are opportunities to sell tickets in other routes. But the key issue is in part the issue that a judgement to be made by the council, informed by the committee, looking at whether or not the activities are detrimental and significant, and whether they justify this order. So I've taken a good note of what Miss Ronald said, and I'm sure the committee has too.
So supplementary? No, thank you. That draws public questions to a close. The members of the public are of course welcome to remain here to hear the debate on the substantive items later. I now turn the committee to item five, Record of Urgent Decision Taken by Leader. One such, item five A, the spending of public space protection order throughout Mill Road Cemetery. Does the leader want to speak to this?
Well, I'm just checking what the reference is to the report. So essentially, this is a decision that's been taken, but I'm happy to answer any questions from the committee.
Are there any questions or questions that the committee should discuss? How to say this?
This is in my heart, and the PSPO that is being extended has worked very well. And so, you know, it's for residents and myself as well, but in favour of the extension. Question, could you?
Thank you. In that case, I'll now turn to item six. On punty provision in Cambridge, which can be found on pages thirty-one to forty of the papers, with recommendations at page thirty-two. Those recommendations are being amended. Has the public in terms of, we should have a useful. Okay, so who would like to speak to this issue? That's a bit. Oh, sorry, sorry. The officer speaking to this is David Prince. Have David introduce Lynette Gilbert?
Thank you, Chair. So the report considers that the council wants to establish a new punt station on the river, providing background and front end of the revenue of past few years as well. So the consultation spots for the public space protection order are to be suggested by the PSPO. What alternative could be to create a new punt station to draw back the amount of creative operating garrick hostel lane? Trinity's control will release a licence and ask for some other punt stations within the council ownership. So the first decision to be made is whether the council wants to speak to establish a new punt station. The council has been due to require to buy a new punt station. Members may consider the reasons as to why that could be too beneficial. If the League does decide they would like to establish a new punt station, the report sets out some of the options in terms of location within the council ownership. The four locations in the report are Brantylcon, Lord's Green, Jeece Street and Garrospall Lane. The report looks at the pros and cons of each of those locations. Each location would require various incentives, including family consent, and also content from the services that the town can provide to agents. Both incentives are challenging in some respects, the sites generate their consultation area. One of the sites is adjacent to this building. The other sites are in protected open space or adjacent to an outdoor designated by public nature reserve. Local members consulted on Brantylcon location and based strongly opposed this allocation and the reasons for that set out in the report. So the report sets out how the punt station is further decided to establish one, would operate similar models to the King's Lammamosa, when that was first made available for independent operators. So members are asked to consider whether we should establish a new punt station, and if so, the location for that punt station to delegate authority to head property services to see the sense of funding for that station.
Thank you. I have cancer, please.
Thanks, Chair. If, if the purpose of this, of this report, of this item is to prevent punting from unapproved punt stations, would I take it for a tear? Then I don't think I support this. I don't think it will solve the problem, and I think the history has shown why. Because that was the logic for the development of the punting from Lammamosa. And it was content at that stage that it solved this kind of problem. And in fact, it hasn't, and that's what I'm still talking about today. So I don't think it will solve the problem. And I also don't doubt whether it makes sense to create further punt stations for the distance from customer football. Because I think it carries then inherently the promotion and the need on an economic basis for what touting, which, which isn't necessary if the, if the business is run from a station that is near public football. So I don't think that, that the ideas that are circled in the report really would work. And I don't think, even if they did, in terms of preventing punty from unapproved stations, I don't think they would assist the problem that we're placing these on the next site of Mount Touting.
The purpose of the report is for the members to consider if they want to establish a new punt station. And this is why the council could choose to create a new punt station for front end of benefits as well. But it could be seen as a pragmatic solution to the issues that could go on for several years at Garrospall Lane. Every Lammamosa was intended to solve that problem, but obviously it didn't press all the amount of time. So that's the purpose, it's purely to look at the resolution and to cover problems.
Are there other questions?
That's fair.
Chair, I'm looking currently at my colleague, Councilman Pitt. I had a question and then a few comments. One of the questions was, just a clarification, in terms of Lammamosa, have individuals who've been offered a pitch at Lammamosa declined it because of the terms? That needs to be the implication in the report. So there is, there have been capacity at Lammamosa in the past that is available to independents. And those independents have chosen not to take that up because of the commercial terms that are being offered by the council. Just in relation to the locations that the report suggests, as officers indicated, down at Ward Council in Newham, and I think all Ward Councils in Newham strongly object to a new punt station at Millcon. And in addition, a punt station at Lord's Green as well, because I think, as the public speaker indicated, that area is a very special area around the city. It's, it's an area that even if you look on, on a, on a basis of its proximity to the city centre, King's Parade is very close, but also it's very close to the rural setting further out along the river. And that semi-rural context of that setting is very important to this city. And it's very important because it provides that uniqueness so close to the city centre. And already, the commercial activities in that area are threatening that fragile eco-balance that sits in that area. And I think any further commercialisation would, would be a step too far. So I am strongly opposed to any proposals to increase the punty stations in that area. I do recognise, I was involved in the Lammamosa issue when I was the executive councillor, I do recognise that punting is an ongoing issue. And I think we all thought that we may have solved the problem when we created the Lammamosa punt station. It's clearly not been the case, but I also think of the Councilman Pitt, I'm not sure that providing more capacity will actually solve the problem anywhere.
The fourth person to me, does there's any other councillor who wish to speak to this?
Well, in terms of just the points that have been raised, in response to Councilman Pitt, the generation of this report wasn't specifically related to issues at Garrospall Lane. It was an overall value of there being a review of sites in public lands that might be available. So the consideration of the four sites obviously includes a discussion about Garrospall Lane, because it's certainly our view of a site that doesn't have planning permission, of a site that's currently operating twenty boats. of a site that's currently operating twenty boats, that that is not a suitable site. Obviously, as you say, it's in the city centre, so that in connection with its location, it has the opportunity to attract a lot of business. The issue is, what is the scale of that site? And there's also a discussion to be had with the conservatives as part of that, which is indicated on page thirty-six. So as I guess you both said as councillors, this isn't the last discussion or report on this issue, but I think there's very clear evidence stated on pages thirty-six and thirty-seven that Garret's Lane is not a good or a suitable site for the kind of operation that's there now. Now, if there's a discussion about other versions of that, then that's a discussion still to be had, but the particular fear would be that if there was a planning permission for a small site, and again, that's subject to planning and not to the councillor's landowner, that that wouldn't necessarily be what would happen anyway. So there's a discussion of Garret's Lane, and then, as I totally agree with the comments that councillor Cantrell's made about Lordres Green, that is not a commercial site, that is a very important area, leisure area within the river, and it's not a commercial zone at all. Jesus Green, I think there has been some look at that possible punt station right beside the loch, but overall, given the issues that have happened at Jesus Green in the past, and some of the issues on that side, there are challenges to there. And then finally, it's a balanced judgement, but looking at the fact that there is also already one significant operator at the Grant Hill Pond, and just the capacity of the site, that it's my conclusion that that isn't suitable for a second punt station. So what I'm proposing is a slightly amended recommendation in that the recommendations as worded in the report were openly ended, and if the Chair's happy, I would read it out. So it's an amended recommendation two-one. The council has reviewed the topic of providing an extra punt station by detail included in the report, and has considered factors such as the views of elected members, and local residents, and speakers today, as well as congestion and likely environmental planning issues. And two-two, the council's conclusion is that there is no currently identified site available on public land adjacent to the river that's suitable for additional development. Now, it could well be that there may be a site in private land, it could well be that there's further discussion on this matter with the conservatives, but I will be seeking the committee's support for that amended recommendation, if the Chair's proposing to move it.
Do we have hard copy of the amended motion for members, please?
Chair, just a point of clarification, can the executive councillor propose a amendment?
Why not?
Yes, to come through the chair. The chair is proposing it, yeah.
So I just want to, you have the amendment before you. Does any, before we go to the actual amendment, before I move the amendment, does anybody wish to speak to it? In that case, I propose to amend the motion, the recommendations are on page thirty-two, as set out in front of you. Can I see those in favour of the amending of the motion? Those against? And so, now, before we vote on the amended recommendation, the leader, executive councillor, is recommended to act as set out in the amended recommendation. Those in favour? Thank you. And are you happy to?
Yeah, I'm inclined for that decision.
Thank you. That concludes item six. We now move on to item seven. Which officer wishes to address item seven for us? Danny Kaye will speak to this.
I mean, I think I've already said it in answer to questions and several important points made by members of the public. So effectively, we have already had a, we have stated an intention to consult on whether or not there was significant antisocial behaviour resulting from punt outing and nuisance caused by the numbers of punt outs, and then we've conducted a consultation, and in front of us is a detailed report, and obviously officers will contribute on that. There's been a large number of responses from members of the public, comments made by the registered and unregistered punt outs. I just want to particularly, because it's quite a long report, including for members of the public that are here, the recommendations are on page forty-seven, and I just also want to point out the dependencies to the report, because they're on page eighty-seven, they're listed, and they then reference the document, the revised area, particularly the analysis of the consultation responses that they did, G, the responses from the police in H, some detail thought about signage, and including following up some of the comments from public speakers, the specific responses from people proposing alternatives, the dependencies out to, so thank you, I'm just let officers open the report.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Chair. This report, officers involved across the council highlights all responses have been fully considered, and the changes proposed are written on PSPO, reflect the efforts that the council has taken to represent the views of those consulted. The comprehensive consultation was carried out, and the details of whom and who we consulted are in section four of the report. The consultation ran from twenty-first January to seventeenth February, and included an online questionnaire, a drop-in session, meetings with interested parties, press releases, and various forms of communication with businesses and apologists. There were a large number of responses to the questionnaire, and these have been objectively analysed by CERL Organisation Measurement Evaluation Learning, and their final report is attached at appendix G. We have also received some responses in the form of legal representations, and we have taken appropriate advice on these, which is highlighted in the report. I'm now going to hand over to the safer community manager to take a few details of the report.
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of the report is to inform the executive councillor of the results of the consultation on public spaces protection order, and to highlight the main substantive issues that have been raised, and also explain how these have been taken into account in formulating the proposed PSPO. We've also demonstrated within the report that in coming to the recommendations, we've consistently referred back to the antisocial behaviour crime and policing act with the introduction of a PSPO, and that we're confident that all the requirements have been met. And some of the headlines from the report are, there were nine hundred and forty-one responses to the consultation, just over half of the respondents supported the use of the PSPO. The most common view expressed was that touts are a nuisance, aggressive, intimidating, or similar. Examples of the comments made around this are included in tables on pages fifty-one, fifty-five, and the full responses are available online. However, there were thirty-nine per cent of respondents who didn't support a PSPO, and a number of grounds for objection were raised. We also received specific representations from operators and others, which we have discussed in detail in the report. Some of the issues addressed, in particular in section five, were the effectiveness of the consultation, the community impact statement of Sartre and Wood, the activities covered by the draft PSPO, and the financial interest of the council in punt and walking tours, and the process around ticket sales through the visitor centre. The proportionality of the PSPOs addressed in section six, and the areas where there are exceptions to touting are considered in section nine. The environmental impact of signage, which wasn't actually a question on the consultation, but was raised by members of the public, is addressed in detail in section ten and the appendix I. The report also addresses the alternative proposals put forward to the introduction of a PSPO in section seven. Consideration of all of the responses of those supportive of a PSPO and the objections raised have led officers to recommend the following. The executive councillor is recommended to approve the proposed PSPO, as now worded as appendix B, and which now excludes genuine walking tours that do not have a punt element, and is also to be reviewed, have the order reviewed in twelve months. The area indication on the map at appendix A has been reduced from the originally proposed draft for reasons explained in section eight, and the executive councillor is recommended to approve this new area. And finally, the executive councillor is asked to delegate to officers the authority to implement signage appropriate to our PSPO, that may be ruled out.
Is there any other question to raise or to speak to this? House of Commons.
Hello. I mean, I think the problem is that punting is so popular, and huge quantities of money are made from doing it. I know my fourteen-year-old daughter, seventy-five pounds a day, touting. I think it was for your campaign, I think it was for my place on Jesus Green, the traditional punt, I think it's called there. Anyway, so the vast couple of that quantity, my fourteen-year-old girl is earning seventy-five pounds a day, it gives you an idea of the amount of money that's there to make. It's clearly an area that really needs to be examined closely. I don't really know, but what I do know is that at the present moment, I support a PSPO because it isn't enough, it isn't good enough when visitors come to the city and say they feel harassed, or that they're constantly pestered by touts. I don't know myself, I will, you know, if I don't look like a resident, I get touted too. So I understand the competing interests, but the bottom line for me is that residents and visitors have to feel comfortable, and so I support the imposition of a PSPO. And the whole area needs to be looked at, I mean, I don't know, long term, I don't know, but what I do know is that I support the PSPO now.
So just to clarify, as I said, would you declare the interest in the extension of the tools or how to employ it?
Yes, I mean, it hadn't occurred to me, I just remembered sitting there, she was twenty-four nights, quite some time ago, yes. I mean, if I was declaring the interest, I would be saying, oh, yes, it's great, young kids can make money because I thought it was great that she was doing so. But I've come to realise how much of a problem it is becoming. It is now, and it will get worse. So we need to work at it now, which provides some kind of breathing space for all interested parties to really look at what can be done, to examine what can be done, and meantime, make the city more pleasant for residents and for visitors.
Thank you, Councilman Pitt.
Thanks, Chair. I, for me, one of the, one of the concerns here is about this power of public space protection. I think they're enormously powerful tools. I very much regret that the council previously rejected the suggestion that they should be subject, when we look at them, to a sort of double lock by considering them only approved after they've been to the full council and been rehearsed in debate about that before, just during the committee of six councils. I mean, they're powerful because they do enable us to effectively have for activities which are not criminal by law of the land, and so we are taking an departure from what is generally okay and generally lawful when we embark on these. Now, I'm not sure they don't have a valid role in the controlling of what I do agree is a nuisance in the city associated with punt outing. My concern is the way that this has been done in the proposals that we've got in progress. And my concern is that, I'm worried that the council is actually trying to be able to clever in the way that it is trying to employ this. It seems that we're looking at areas where it is okay for punt outing to be carried on, but we're trying to be selective about the people who can carry it on in those areas. And I think we're mixing our objectives, I think we're getting often mixed up about whether we think that the activity of punt outing is a nuisance, or whether it's a nuisance conducted by some people rather than other people. The difference here is obviously whether the council has a contractual relationship with the people, which I think stands a pretty good chance of being challenged at law, as being a separate matter entirely. It's not a question of whether people have signed a piece of paper before they touts within a particular area, it's how they behave in that particular area, as an actual fact, not what they have undertaken. And it feels like we're mixing the objectives, and I think that, I'm worried that if the council, if that's something that has proposed, then we are going to end up subject to challenge on those grounds. Signing a code of practice doesn't necessarily equate to actual behaviour, and we should be focused on actual behaviour in the way that we try and maintain law and order, if you want to use a grandiose term like that, in the city. It's not the same behaviour, it's the actual behaviour that counts. So either it's okay to tout, or it's not okay to tout, and I think these hatched areas on our map of where some people are allowed to tout, others aren't, are problematic and cause me to have some questions about whether this is a viable way of sustaining a sort of challenge. We've had plenty of warning about it, and one of the speakers has put his finger on exactly the same point as I have. So I am concerned about this, and I, not in vain, I may be, it's a long report, and I may have missed it, but it seems to me that we should be defining what the detrimental effect is that we are trying to ensure ourselves against. We've said that the activity we're concerned around is touting, but that's supposed to result in a detrimental effect, and I suppose, I'm living here, but I suppose that detrimental effect is something to do with people getting pestered repeatedly, sometimes subject to some of the nuisances that are described elsewhere in the report, but I couldn't find where it actually defined in a neat way associated with the order itself, what was the detrimental effect we were trying to define or identify. So for me, that has to be that behaviour touts, it has nothing directly to do, I have not seen the case proven, it's nothing directly to do with what sort of stations people are punting their boats from, it has to do with the activity on the streets. If there is a relationship between the bad behaviour of touts and which stations they come from, I've not seen that conclusively proven in any of the reports that we've seen. So my concern is here that we could be embarking on something which isn't going to remain intact and a challenge, and may have its own consequences because of it.
Would the officer manage to respond to that?
I think the issue is that we have some more control over the touting from the people who have licences with us and who are entitled to sign up to the code of practice. We can terminate their agreement or take action against them under their licences, and we have. We can terminate their agreement or take action against them under their licences and we have done that in the past. We can identify them more easily and we have required them to, to take action against the behaviour of those touts. There's also the issue that they are not generally touting on King's Parade and in the market square, they're touting in specific places where we're not having as much problem or complaints coming from those areas.
Any other questions or requests? Councilor Beattie.
Chair, I share my colleagues' concern regarding the, whether or not this is cast iron in terms of its implementation and whether or not we will have some form of legal challenges. I do struggle to understand the linkage between the contractual relationship that we have with operators on the river, where we have a relationship because of the, the commercial agreement with them and the implementation of this order. I have a question for the officers in relation to that. Do we have a contractual relationship, commercial relationship with all those operators on the river that are currently in a, in operation or in existence? That was one question. The second point I'd like to make is that, one of the points that was raised in the previous meeting before this went out as consultation is the level of signage. And I think there has been some attempt to reduce the level of signage. I have to say, Chair, I think the level of signage is still very extensive. And again, we've touched earlier in terms of very sensitive parts of the city and the impact on those sensitive parts. And we already have a clutter of signage in those parts of the city, as we can see from some of the photos, for example, page one nine seven. We're just adding more signage to, to that array of clutter that sits across the historic board. And I think that's just another, another consequence of, of proposals which is very detrimental. I recognise that touting is the issue, I recognise that residents and councillors are very frustrated in terms of the, the position that was reached certainly last year and to a certain degree this year. And it does need to, to resolve, but I'm not sure that this order is the right way.
Which officer would like to respond to Councilor Cantrell's summary?
In relation to the contractual relationship where we have control over touting, we have said operators at Land Mose, Scoobawards, Keyside, Cambridge Punt, Silver Street. In relation to the voluntary practice, touting is signed up. Again, we have said operators at Land Mose, Scoobawards, at all their sites, at Cambridge Punt. So the only operator outside of voluntary practice play at times are artists and runners.
I have a thought, Chair.
Yes.
Can I just ask the officer therefore, what's the implications of running punts of the PSPO order? And in terms of their ability to, to sell tickets relative to the other operators?
They will still be able to taint in accordance with voluntary practice, which is what the exception areas are written to.
So before turning to the leader to wrap this up, is there any council that has not stated any kind of significance? No? No, 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 you'll be there.
So can I ask Chair, what would be the position of, of operators from unapproved punt stations saying that they would sign the voluntary code of conduct and then touting in the areas that section? Surely that would, as much as those voluntary codes deal with the behaviour of touts, why wouldn't they be able to punt, tout in those, in those areas and that will be particularly renewed from the PSPO?
So any officers want to add?
The voluntary code of practice requires you to be licensed and be approved, acting within the rules for the purposes.
That's a good.
Chair, just to come as full circle on my original remarks, but those, those elements of voluntary code have nothing to do with the nuisance per se of, of touting. That is a wholly other issue about people punting from stations that they were truly punting from. And it seems to me that that's the weakness of trying to allow some people and not others to tout whilst claiming it's a nuisance.
I think I'll turn to the leaders of the committee.
Well, I'd be keen to hear what the committee has decided, but I'll come back to that thread on page forty-three, which asks and basically relates whether or not the PSPO, the Public Spaces Protection Order is an appropriate response to the persistent punt outing that occurs in the city centre and the level of nuisance that it causes. So we have in paragraph one-three, that core issue of the detrimental effect. So it's a judgment by the committee about whether the detrimental effect of repeated stopping of people as they walk through the city centre, given that we have punt outs on Sydney Street, on Andrew Street, on Petticuree, on South Park Line Yard on the outside, Market Square, King's Parade and fifty another streets nearby. So it's a question of the detrimental effect. There clearly is a public view, which is why we had the consultation. And there's a judgment, there's a balance in there. The police are involved in this. I have talked to Cambridge Bid, the Business Improvement District, and there is a large amount of data on what are the issues that get raised by members of the public with their bowler hatted ambassadors. And punt outing is one of the most significant issues. So there is a judgment to be made. I mean, in my view, on balance, there is a significant detrimental effect in the city. And there are, partly in the discussion that was partly initiated by the points that Mr Arnold made, but other points that I've made, but there's a discussion, albeit that there's no specific conclusion in the report on page eighty-one, I think it is, about kiosks. But there is a discussion about the potential for kiosks. There's also, just to follow up the Councilor Beattie's point, if you look at page eighty-nine, there clearly are areas near the river where, that is where people are going to, share punts. And if they're going to areas where they know that there are punts, then, then there's a different issue than people free-roaming around the city, stopping people relatively indiscriminately, but particularly repeatedly stopping anybody who looks like a tourist. And people mentioning that they've stopped eight or nine times. So, so near the river, and that is the purpose of page eighty-nine, there is a logic. I am near the river, I'm probably interested in punting. Therefore, there are arrangements there for that. And the operation as occurs on Keyside, if people look at the top right-hand corner, the area of touting areas that are identified there shows how it can operate without actually then being an indiscriminate way of stopping people just walking around the city. So, so I think the detriment, in my judgment, is there. Is it persistent? Well, I think it is persistent. And then on balance, it's a judgment about whether it's reasonable or not. There are other routes to sell tickets, there is private land and I, certainly from my perspective, I see no reason for the council to be concerned about sales of tickets via partnership with coach tour operators, online, on, on private lands or in areas near the river. The issue then, a related issue, is then, the, sorry, I've got, this might upset. In terms of the council's interests, I mean, yes, there is a direct, there's now a destination management organisation which can make arrangements with different punt operators to sell tickets. And the, it's not under the council's control anymore. We have a director on that organisation, but that's one person amongst a company which is now independent of the council. So the, the council inevitably in a complicated city has financial interests, but has no direct financial interest in the sale of, of tickets for punting. In terms of some of the opportunities that could be developed, clearly the tourist funded organisation is free to make its choices there. So overall, I believe that the Public Spaces Protection Order on balance, and I'll take Councilor Beattie's point about the judgment about whether this is, is reasonable. It's a reasonable measure given the scale of interception of members of the public just going around their daily business. And there will undoubtedly be different views about that. And whether or not there is a legal challenge, I don't think is directly related necessarily. Whether there is a case for a challenge, as has been mentioned by Councilor Sinne, there is a lot of money involved in this operation. That is part of the reason, well, the seriousness of our decision-making has been behind the time that we've taken to look at the consultation and the fact that we're not rushing at this. We're not particularly concerned about this summer, but we would want to proceed to implement it. In terms of signage, I take Councilor Cantrell's point, but if you actually look at the sign that Councilor Cantrell mentioned, and the committee has a considerable body of evidence here. If you actually look all the way through at the way the signs are to be located, there, there's very few new sign locations. The example that Councilor Cantrell used on page one nine seven, what's a sign underneath what is admittedly a complicated barrage in the way of signs, but nevertheless, it doesn't set up a new sign post specifically. Although those signs, as Councilor Cantrell noted, play a very important role on, on unregulated areas, particularly along Queen's Road. And it will certainly be the intention on signage to limit it. Finally, it is to be a twelve-month trial. So, and there will be other decisions taken. The previous item that we discussed is not the end of the discussion about Garaboswell Lane, nor is it the end of the discussion with the Conservatives about some of the issues about what is provision on the river. So no one ever imagined that item seven or Public Spaces Protection Order would be the end of the debate about punting in this city. But we do believe, and that I, well, I believe, but obviously I will be guided by the committee, that this is an appropriate measure in the circumstances, given the scale of repeated impact on people just walking through parts of the city way away from the river.
Since members of the committee are happy, I suggest we proceed to the recommendations set out on pages forty-six and seven, which have been read out to us earlier. So can I please see those in favour of the recommendations the executive councillor has set out there? And those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. So the recommendations are carried, so the executive councillor contends that this...
Yeah, I concur with the recommendations as set out on pages forty-six and seventy-seven.
Thank you, that concludes that item. I'd like to thank the public for their forbearance in that. We now turn to item eight.